I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order in the unlikely event of an emergency. If we have to evacuate the auditorium, please note the location of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for individual reflection.
Round the corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we remember Mr. John Bunting, who worked for the district from 1975 through 1997, and retired as Director of Curriculum and Instruction, who passed away on May 9, 2016, and for Mrs. Gerda Colev, a bus driver from 1977 through 2002, who passed away on May 30, 2016. And also, today is the 72nd anniversary of D-Day, June 6, 1944, so let's please remember those who have sacrificed and fought and continue to do so for us. Moving on to 4.0, Presentations. 4.1, we have a capital improvement project update from Mr. Joe Aramini from LP Seminelli.
Can you hear me? Yes? Okay. Hello, I'm Joe Aramini. I am the Project Manager for LP Seminelli. I'm here to give you guys a capital project update, basically Phase 4 and 6A, which is where we're at in the construction progress right now. There's two buildings that are currently under construction or will be under construction this summer, the high school, which is Phase 4, Hillview Elementary, which is Phase 6A. Project overview, right now, we are in Phase 4. The scope of work, crawl space asbestos abatement and re-insulation of the piping down there, ceilings and lights replacements throughout the entire building, the computer lab air conditioning, there's several locations where we're doing air conditioning in the computer labs, electrical distribution, which is main distribution throughout the entire building of the high school, locker replacements, which is throughout the entire building of the high school, serving area renovations, including ceilings, lights, floors, and new heating equipment, and the north and south parking lot renovations. What we've done to date, we started in February, we started with the first break, February break, as well as the March break. We did crawl space abatement, this is the north area of the high school, underneath the pool, underneath the Java gym, going back towards the fieldhouse. This area is on the west side of the building, towards Forton Drive, it extends from the main office all the way down to Room 114. Now, previously, you couldn't go into these crawl spaces, the asbestos from the piping materials, you needed to be certified to be in those spaces, you needed respirators, you needed Tyvek suits in order to go in here. After we completed the work, now it's wide open, not only for the contractors, this is great, obviously for the maintenance of the building, now it's wide open, we can get into these spaces. So, those are two major pieces that we did over February/March breaks. Next piece that we started, I believe in the February break, we did two classrooms over February, and we did two classrooms over March. This is on the east side of the building, towards the tennis courts on the first floor. We did ceilings and lights in this location. We got a little greedy, and we wanted to do a couple more ceilings and lights, so we worked with Mr. Marchioli and his staff, and he was able to open up some spaces for us on the second floor. We've actually been doing that for the last four weeks, vacating the space, we found a swing classroom, they moved the classroom out for one week, we got the ceilings and light stuns in those classrooms, moved them back in, and then moved on to the next row. So, we've accomplished eight classrooms, when we were only supposed to do four per the schedule, which helps us accelerate this summer schedule a little bit. So, before, what we had was adhered ceilings with drywall lids, basically inaccessible, you can't get in the ceiling space. What we've done is a district standard, basically two-by-four tile, we've been trying to go to a district standard with this capital project, same tiles, basically, in all the classrooms, same light fixtures in all the classrooms. So, we went from a fluorescent lighting fixture to a high-efficiency LED lighting fixture for all these classrooms. Next work we did was HVAC ductwork and equipment. This is another area where we kind of bit off something where we weren't expecting to do it until the summertime. This is the back technology lab areas, Room 167 and 166, Room 206 through 212, these are the computer labs, we're doing air conditioning inside those spaces, we were able to get this accomplished over the March break. So, these are a couple pictures of the work that we did. This is our all-new rooftop ductwork over here, ductwork inside Classroom 167 right here. We actually have rooftop equipment coming onsite this Wednesday, so we're actually accelerating the schedule, trying to get all the equipment onsite, so that once the summer break starts, we can actually just continue our work. Classroom 206 to 212, these are the air conditioning units and the piping that we installed over the March break, and this is a condensing unit that's on the roof, air conditioning unit for the computer lab in 158. Biggest piece of this project, it's probably one-third of the entire project at the high school, is the electrical utility. What we are doing is we're taking power from the street, we're putting a new pole in front of Forton Drive, we're bringing new power into the building, complete new distribution, new transformers, new panels, new breakers, new wire, so we're starting from scratch, that's kind of the reason why we're shutting down the high school for the contractors this summer. So, what we were able to accomplish so far, because we did the asbestos abatement over the couple breaks, we're able to stage all this new equipment, it's already onsite. I would say about 90% of the equipment is onsite already, probably about 50% of it is staged already. So, basically, what we're waiting for is the main power shutdown, which we'll be doing, scheduled for July 28th, it's about a two-week process, transferring power over from the existing power to the new power. Now, upcoming work, what we're going to be doing this summer, I just discussed the main power distribution, locker replacements throughout, lockers are scheduled to be starting to be removed on June 27th, first day we're in there, all the new lockers will be onsite the week of July 11th to start reinstalling them. North and south parking lot paving and renovations, the north lot, we are doing just a mill and refilling the space, more of a cosmetic item. The south parking lot, however, we are creating a bus loop, not a bus loop, a parent drop-off at the south lot, kind of change the traffic pattern in there and the congestion that we're having right now. The cafeteria, serving area renovations, ceilings, lights, floors, we're doing in there. Floor tile abatement and replacement, this is just kind of a standard thing, we kind of pick up as much as we can each project, try to get rid of the asbestos tile as much as we can, and then I think we have about 10 more ceiling and light replacements to do throughout the high school in the summer. Phase 6A is Hillview floor replacements. This project actually came about, we noticed that the scope of work was pretty heavy for next summer, so what we did is we created a small project for this summer. Basically, what we're doing is removing floor tiles, asbestos floor tiles, and replacing them with new VCT floor tiles. So, scope of work is west wing, six classrooms in a corridor, middle wing, six classrooms in a corridor, and the cafeteria. That is what I have as far as update. I do want to say one thing, I don't think Mr. Marchioli's here, but he's done an excellent job coordinating with us, opening up doors for us, allowing us to get into these spaces. So, thank you to Mr. Marchioli and his staff at the high school, because they've done an excellent job clearing the way for us, so, thank you.
So, just so everyone knows, the Board of Education and the community, I asked Joe to come in and give a presentation on what we're doing this summer. All right, so this is the end of the last project, the 19.5, and now we will begin the 57.3. That's been submitted to SED, and now we just wait for approval, and once it's approved, then we can just keep on going, rolling on, and that was the plan from day one, we didn't want to have to take that break, we were worried about a year break of not continuing improvement, but the community approved it, so we're rolling in exactly the fashion and the plan that we set. So, this summer, the Board of Education, once the plans are approved, now everyone knows what's in that 57.3, but this summer, the Board of Education will now take, you know, sit down with the architects, look at rendered drawings and all the specifics that have been approved, and start looking at that in higher detail. But again, it hasn't improved yet, so we'll take that next step this September. Let's say, it could happen anytime, we're ready, end of July, August, or September, to have those conversations and that dialogue. So, but I wanted everyone to know what was happening this summer, because it's the culmination of one and the beginning of another in this particular project. So, if there's any comments or questions, sure.
Between the new electric equipment and the light bulbs, which are a little bit more modern, how much do you estimate is to how much you're saving dollars in terms of electric power?
That's not something that I would be pretty too unfortunate with. Yeah, that would be more on the engineering side of it.
One of the factors when you're planning this, we're looking at that.
Let's ask that question of the architects when they show up in July/August, they'll have an answer for that.
High-efficiency LED, yes, yep, everything is LED now, no more fluorescent T8s, anything like that. Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah. Add longevity to them, the LEDs are obviously a longer-lasting fixture, so.
Good.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
4.2, next we have Mr. Ken Kowalski, who will speak about the Carnival Kids Street Orchestra.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am here tonight to ask you to consider, and I'm going to propose to you that the trip that the Steel Drum Group would like to take next Easter, and I'm asking for board support and approval on this. Since the trip does go out of the country, we do need the board to approve this trip, which is the reason I'm here tonight. The trip that we are proposing to take would go to Miami, out of Miami, it would go to Nassau, that's the one area out of the country, Cocoa Cave, which is a private beach owned by Royal Caribbean, back into Key West, Florida, right away, and again, we'd have time in Miami. When we looked at some of these trips, we did, we're certainly considering costs, we're considering educational value, there are other things to look at. What I did avoid is going to Cozumel, Mexico, some of the quote-unquote "party towns." Also, I wanted to avoid anything with the Zika virus. So, those are all things that we do take into consideration when we look at a trip like this. The trip, there are no scheduled school days, it would be missed by the students, no school cost, of course, with this, this is all self-funded, and I've already worked with Dr. Valili, Dr. Perini, Jamie Phillips, and we've covered insurances with this, those are all ready to go upon board approval, I've contacted the Evans Agency, there are insurances we have to have for the trips, insurances to cover the kids' money, so they cannot come back to the school and say, "Well, because the code changed," all that is covered, so that's all cleared. A couple of the highlights of the trip, this one came about, and I'm very, very excited about this one. When we get to Miami, going into Little Havana, with the United States opening up relationships with Cuba again, I thought this is just such a great educational thing, there's a tour company down there that will take all of the students right into Little Havana and explain the cultures and things like that, and very excited about that part of it. Of course, music has to be a part of this, and there's a very, very well-known musician right in Miami, Leon Foster Thomas, he's got CDs out, he's right from Trinidad, not only is he an accomplished pan player, he's right from the island where they originated, so we have the, you know, the history of that as well. So, those are some of the highlights of the trip. Part of it is also, I think these kids deserve it, if I could say that. This group does 40 performances a year, you know, that were very, very busy throughout the summer, and these kids are just so hard-working, they represent us so well. We're working on our fifth CD, you might have seen us recently featured on Channel 7, you might have heard we're also going to be playing with the Buffalo Philharmonic, that news came out, and we're so proud of that. I've never heard of a high school group playing during the concert with the Buffalo Philharmonic. They've played in the Mary Seton Room beforehand, but never as part of the entire program, and we're very, very proud of that. The cost is reasonable, all but five of the students will have a parent or parents or siblings on the trip. The parent, we have the 20 students, Mrs. Sheer, we have 76 people going already, 70, yeah, so there's a lot of, the parents are going, it's basically, they're lined up, if this is approved, we can just go with that. Officially a chaperone, we have three Lancaster teachers, myself, Mr. Seymour, Ms. Conlin. We have two doctors, Dr. Duzik, Dr. Duzik, they are both pediatricians, and we have a travel agent going, so I think we've got everything, you know, covered as far as that goes. So, that is my proposal to our esteemed board.
Do you have a board member going?
You got it.
So, I think, I mean, yours is a very prestigious group, and I appreciate the opportunities you afford to these young people, and I'm glad you referenced things that, you know, parents are concerned with, first of all, the insurance that you'll need to carry, but also that you're monitoring things that are going on in the world. You know, you mentioned the Zika virus, and all parents are nervous and concerned when their children travel, and then you covered that as well, with the chaperones and the pediatricians and that, so hats off to you, it sounds like a nice trip, good for you.
Thank you.
And for the students. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is an action item, so, all those in favor of the trip?
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would move to approve the motion.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I just have, I'm sorry, one question, and this would be subject to the normal, you know, if Zika does get worse, this would be subject to that, to that kind of level alert?
Yeah, I mean, we'll continue, I guess, to monitor the situation, and you do as well, and keep us informed, but if, you know, if something does become more urgent, right, then we'll revisit this.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Again, if the code was to change, if something does happen, you know, that would become a health issue, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski.
We continue to watch on that.
Okay, so, anything else? Okay, let's revote then. All those in favor of the trip?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved.
Thank you so very much again.
Enjoy yourself. Moving on to 5.0, Correspondence. 5.1, we received an email from Mrs. Gloria Chavez on May 31st, received a letter from Mr. and Mrs. James McAleny dated June 1, 2016, and 5.3, a letter received from Dakota Miller dated June 2, 2016. 6.0, Approval of Minutes, could I have a motion to, 6.1, Annual Budget Hearing, May 9th, could I have a motion to accept the budget hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 6.2, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from May 9?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, second was ten.
Any, sorry about that. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 6.3, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from May 17?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0, Items from Staff Organizations. Is there anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Yes, just on behalf of the last, I will be at the last meeting, but we just want to thank Mr. Greber for his years of service on more education to the community and to all the students of Lancaster. Thank you.
Anyone from Lancaster Central Teachers Association? Okay, anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, 8.0, Board Reports. This is the time when those on the board would report out as to what they've attended or if.
Mr. UTEC, I'd like to indicate, yes, May 18th, I had the privilege of attending the marching band awards dinner, and it was, meant a lot to me, because that's where my background came from, working with the marching band when my children were in it, and there was a problem with them going on a trip, that's what led to me running for the board in the first place, and the change in the policy. And I'm very glad the Carnival Kids have been able to benefit from what was done years ago. Secondly, I attended on May 25th, the Academy of Finance graduation ceremony at University of Buffalo, excellent program. Once again, not only are they one of the best at that in the country, but those are all the students we're going to see at graduation on the 24th with all the awards, and I'm sure they're all tonight at the high school with the awards. And then June 3, I was at the Lancaster Middle School here, where the Rotary served breakfast, and they give it to the children on the honor roll in the 7th and 8th grade, and what's interesting is approximately 55% of the students who are enrolled at this school had breakfast, because they're on the honor roll. It was like 550 or 560, something like that. So, it shows the community, the great work done by the faculty here, the administration in this district. So, I mean, students were all well-behaved. One comment I do have to make, we also have a breakfast at DePew, and they had a much better breakfast, but that's not what it's about.
Thank you, Mr. Greber. Anyone else from the board like to report?
I got one. I also had the opportunity to take part in that breakfast, it was actually a lot of hard work, serving that breakfast to all those kids, and then resetting several times. I also had the opportunity, an amazing academic and athletic year for the Legends, I was able to see the boys' baseball win the sectional title, the girls' lacrosse win the sectional title, I was also able to go to the boys' lacrosse sectional, and the boys' regional baseball game in Rochester. Amazing set of student athletes.
Okay, for my board reports, I'm going to present on the NISBA Advocate liaison, and just update you on what's going on with that. I wanted to draw attention to the board members on the NISBA website, there are a bunch of webinars that are coming up, I just asked Sandy to sign me up, there's four of them that I'm going to be watching. What's nice about those is they offer them at a certain time, but you can watch it afterwards, because most of them are during this school day for me, so you can, even though there's a date and time, you don't have to watch it at that time. But there are four of them, one is End of Legislation Session, which is pretty good, dealing with APPR, tax credits, tax cap. The second is the School Board and District Communities, and it's making sure that our district, our board is putting all the right committees into place, and how to access these current committees, just to make sure that everything's on the up and up. The third one is Building a Strong Board Superintendent Relationship on August 17th, and the fourth is College and Career Graduating Ready, that's not till September, but you can sign up for those now, so just a heads-up on what's coming up there. Another conference that I will be attending, and I think a few others, and I'm going to encourage all of you to attend, is on August 3, the Western New York Summer Education Law Conference will be held here in Buffalo at the Millennium. It is all-day on a Wednesday, I realize some of you will be working, as teachers will not be, but we will be busy doing this, and it's actually pretty good with the topics this year, they're all very relevant, talking about cybersecurity, transgender student issues, special education updates, and so on, so I think it'll be very informative, and Sandy will sign you up if you are interested, as she's going to do for me, so maybe if you can tell her tonight, she could do all of us, or whoever wants to go. The 2016 Annual Convention that we all attend every year is in Buffalo this year, registration is now open, and if we do register this month, there is a savings for our registration, so I would encourage you to let Sandy know if you'll be attending that as well. Okay, as far as that conference, we know that we send someone to the resolution process, and that is something that we need to start working on for this summer, because the due dates are coming up. So, this is an opportunity for us as a board to set positions and beliefs in the organization, and that's what they fight for, is what we ask them to. So, we should set some time aside, maybe in, you know, July, if possible, August, at the very least, because this is due, actually, it's due August 1st for the proposal, so we can do, if there is anything that you want to do a resolution for, it is due August 1st, and then amendments are due on September 2nd, and then it goes on from there, but we have to have these ready for the NISBA convention in October.
So, you're saying anything that we as a board care to draft as a resolution, right?
Yep, there's a toolkit on the website, and it's very helpful, and it's very self-explanatory, it walks you through it, and if there's anything that we as a board would like to see resolved, changed, amended, and so on, NISBA is our advocate, so we can use that resource. I did it once on my previous term on the board, it's very interesting, it's a long day, but it's good stuff, it's very interesting, and I would, you know, maybe we should just give it some thought, and something we should look into. I'm almost done. I believe it was May, it could have been the April meeting, but one of the meetings I suggested or asked that we nominate one of our groups here at Lancaster for the Be the Change for Kids Innovation Award, I'm not sure if we did, we submitted someone?
We did.
Which, who did we submit?
Mrs. Saab and her genius hour.
Awesome. The extension, there's been an extension to the deadline, so I just wanted to make sure we got in on that, because it is here in Buffalo, so it'll be great. Last thing, I found this very interesting as a special education teacher myself, and I'm not sure, I'm sure Dr. Bailey knows about this, and Mr. Armstrong, if he's here, if he's not, I'll share this with him, but the state officials are now looking to have some flexibility in graduation requirements, and they will be meeting on June 13th and 14th. And basically, what this is, is to ensure high-performing special ed students aren't fairly denied diplomas, because some of our special needs kids do very well in the classroom, but they don't do so well on a region's exam. So, right now, there's a high population of students with learning disabilities who just do just that, they perform well in the course, but not so well in the exam, and then they don't get credit for the exam, so they're looking to change that, I'm so excited about this, I think it's going to be great. So, in January, our commissioner did recommend that the regions expand the academic pathway for the graduation to better serve those students with disabilities, and she outlined some three general approaches, which is a wider window to appeal exam scores, a new career development pathway, and a project-based assessment, which I think is phenomenal, and I really hope this goes through. So, I'm going to be watching this, and I will update you on the 20th. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Christopher. Anyone else on the board? Okay, I had a couple things that I attended worth mentioning, there's many things going on at all of the schools to wrap up the year. On the 24th, I was in attendance at the high school Leadership in Action Celebration, which is very nice, all the juniors and seniors who take the course give a speech, and then midway through, they have a nice dish-to-pass dinner in the courtyard, and then they come back and finish, so, one of many nice evenings going on at the high school. I also attended the high school all choral concert. I also attended the high school all choral concert, which if you've never been in the audience for that, that's quite to do as well. And they honor all the seniors and the ladies dress up in their gowns and the boys are in the white jackets and Mr. Lee and his, the whole music department do a wonderful job with that as well. And then I look forward to on the 9th of this week, coming to Lancaster Middle School for their awards assembly. So many great things going on at Lancaster schools this time of year. Okay, we'll move on to...
Can I just make a statement?
Absolutely.
Well, it's directed to Mrs. Christopher. I wish I would go back and ask them in regards to the conference, the law conference in August, if they could possibly move it to a Saturday. Because for a lot of us, it's very inconvenient to, you know, take a day off during the week and I think they would get more people if it was hosted on a Saturday and, or maybe some night at 6 o'clock, so more board members could attend. Because there's a lot of good information that they do offer.
Has it, hasn't it been...
It's always been during the week.
It's always been during the week?
Yep.
During the day, too.
And during the day. So it's really hard for a lot of us to get that time off.
I will, I have a legislative meeting coming up, so I will, I will ask that. It obviously won't happen this year, I don't think.
No.
No, but in the future, it would be nice if it could accommodate more board members throughout Western New York. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to 9.0, Superintendent's Administrative Report. Dr. Bailey?
Yeah, I would like to take an opportunity to update Mrs. Christopher on that. Marie, what, Mrs. Zahn is scheduled for, what, the NISBA conference?
We put it in for the Innovation Award, the Change for Kids. We put a proposal for her for that. But we do have, we were accepting, a number of us were accepted, Bruce for technology, who just wants to do a presentation. And we have another group on leadership and service throughout Lancaster, so we're going to be sending for a couple of presentations.
But that's just the...
Right. But the Innovation Award, the Innovation, just the Innovation Award.
So we put in a number of different things that will present in NISBA, but also we put in for the Innovation Award. And then also, just what, week ago, two weeks ago, whatever, also Mrs. Zahn presented and we also put her in for that, too. And I can't remember the name of it, but...
Superintendent's Conference.
Yep.
How would it go?
All right, good, thank you.
It's about to... It's five thousand dollars.
Yeah, and, and I know that we did it, but it's my bad that we didn't communicate it. So accept my apology because I want to make sure that you get that back. So those things are all in and we're good. Just a reminder that LEAF is having its paver campaign. So, you know, those things are circulating throughout the district and they're being purchased and there's only so many pavers. So get your paver now. Maybe you can buy one for a family member or for yourself or for a graduate or a loved one, whatever, but, you know, for whomever. But the idea is that the pavers won't last that long and we're hoping to sell all those things. I'm sure LEAF is doing their best. One thing that wasn't mentioned, the largest triathlon in Western New York and maybe the country, we don't know. They said the country, but I don't know, maybe there's one out there. It was again, a huge, great, a huge success. Hundreds of students and parents and teachers and administrators took part in the event on a hot sunny day. Channels 2 and 4 were in attendance, but the smiling faces on the students who competed, completed the event were the best publicity the district could have ever received. That was a great thing and I'd like to thank all the teachers and administrators and parents who volunteered to make that a success. A lot of hard work goes into that and it's been running for a number of years now and it just keeps on getting better and better and better. Another nice thing that I was able to tend as well was the Leadership Students partnered with the high school Special Education Students for the Legends Olympics, a day of games and activities. So they had bowling, cornhole, and many other games. Everyone succeeded and enjoyed the time together. It's become a tradition here at the high school over a number of years, but it was just great to see those Special Education Students interact with the Leadership Academy Students. Just a special thing to see. It was nice. I'm proud to announce that Senior Gina Sueda will be receiving an award from the Buffalo News on her editorial cartoon that she created in, in illustration and cartooning, a class at the high school this year. Her work can be seen online at thebuffalonews.com, so congratulations to her. It's been mentioned in NISBA choral adjudication festivals and all the things that are happening from a music perspective. But on a special note, I'd like to congratulate the middle school mixed chorus, we're in the middle school today, so, middle, middle school mixed chorus, who earned their first gold ever for middle school choir. So congratulations to them. And then two special faculty recognition, faculty and staff recognition pieces. Julie Havas, the PE teacher at Hillview, has been named the Western New York Elementary PE Teacher of the Year. Julie is a dedicated and hardworking and consistently cheerful member of our PE staff and we're happy that she has received this great honor. And additionally, congratulations to Michelle Zagario, school nurse at William Street, who's receiving the Excellence in School Nurses Award in November. Congratulations to Michelle, who does a great job over there at William Street. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bailey. Moving on to 10.0, Old Business. Does anyone on the board have any old business to bring up? Okay, seeing none. Move to 11.0, New Business. 11.1, Personnel Items. Now I'd like to suggest, we have several of our esteemed administrators who have a tenure recommendation for this evening. I'd like to hear the nice things people will say about them and then if anyone from the board doesn't have an objection, if we could approve those all at once after the presentations. 11.1.7 is tenure recommendations for several teachers who will, we will vote on tonight and then we'll, they'll receive their certificates at a future meeting. So is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Up first, we have 11.1.1, tenure recommendation for Dr. Marie Perini. And is that...
That's me. So Marie Perini from day one has done an absolutely fantastic job as the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Pupil Personnel Services at Lancaster Central School District. Because of Marie Perini's leadership, Lancaster has students earning college credits at increasing rates. The district boasts a 99% graduation rate and zero dropouts. Lancaster has wonderfully fantastic summer school programs, innovative data coaches in every department, Kagan teacher leaders running a staff development program that is now receiving national attention. And has bumped up the, and she has bumped up the curriculum or helped to in every department in this, this district. Moreover, she has earned the respect of the Board of Education, colleagues, administrators, teachers, and most importantly, the respect of the parents and students that she serves. She's reliable, effective, thorough, smart, and professional. And she loves when people talk to her, talk about her like this. You can just see her face down there. And all of these positive qualities are all cradled with a genuine care and concern for the young people and teachers that she supports. She's a great asset to this school district and our administrative team and I recommend her for tenure without reservation.
We can do all of them at the end. Okay, 11.1.2 is Dr. Andrew Kufel. Dr. Perini?
Well, this one's my turn. And Dr. Kufel, sitting in the front row, as most of you know, is a Lancaster graduate. He came, he left, and now he's back again. Some of the best things that can happen to people is to leave for a while, learn what's out there, and to come back and share it. There are times in your career that you run across people and you know they have very special potential. And the first time I met him, when he was down at the, at the high school, actually trying to get a job that he didn't get, but he was interviewing for the job. Even at that point, I knew that he was really a special, special candidate and glad that we were able to get him in the capacity that he's in right now. He works with data coaches, department chairs, and secondary administrators. Anybody who's worked with secondary administrators know how challenging that task can be. So he does a very, very fine job with that. And he also, he also worked with Mrs. Marchiolian bringing Kagan USA to Lancaster. We have never, usually they, they stay in Orlando, Florida because it's too cold up here. But they got them to come up in the middle of winter, so to speak, for them and did a great job on that. He has gotten AP World for grade 10, AP English for grade 11, AP Comp Sci coming up. He's revamping the high school science department and AP Environmental Science next year. He's got 100 extra kids taking Living Environment next year at the middle school. Great job. Algebra I double block at the high school, his idea. Math lab at grade 7, his idea. Worked with Mrs. Marchiolian again on getting accelerated math in grade 6. There's a theme here. He's a big STEM guy. So he's really pushing on the science, technology, engineering, and math curriculum. I think his, one of his finest accomplishments to this point is he is one of the founders of the Foundation for Success class. It's the freshman mandated class starting next year that all freshmen will take. He has worked tirelessly with Mr. Skowron and members of the high school to get that thing going. He's hands-on. He likes discussing. He likes meeting. He likes meeting. He likes to meet. We talk about him at the office all the time. We don't ever see him very much because he's having a meeting someplace. And he builds relationships. He's affable, he's likable, and he's a real asset to this district. So I highly recommend him for tenure. Dr. Andrew Kufel.
And he's also the, the basketball scoring champion, right? Don't you own that record?
But didn't one of his records get thrown by a...
Didn't have anything to do with this tenure recommendation, but it's important to point out.
Thank you. Moving on, 11.1.3, Mrs. Amy Muller.
So it's my pleasure tonight to actually talk about two of the elementary administrators. And as the Board of Education members know from reading my board reports, I often comment on our strong collegial team that we have in the elementary department. I couldn't ask for a better group of people to work with and I'm proud to be part of that group of administrators. They do amazing and wonderful things in their buildings. But to, to start with Amy, Amy comes to us after spending time at the middle school and I was so excited when she made her way back to elementary school where her roots are. She has a can-do attitude and will never focus on the negative. And to that point, a couple of years ago, when Como Park was having all of the construction done, I jokingly said to her, if the construction doesn't get done, we're moving all of Como Park's students to Hillview. And she only looked at me in shock for probably half a second and then she said, okay Karen, whatever you need, we'll make it happen. And I told her I was joking and we all laughed about it, but it's that kind of attitude that she has all the time about any kind of challenge that makes her so respected amongst her students, her teachers, the support staff, and the other administrators. And, and most importantly, she's a role model to our students. The, the other day at the color run, I think Amy had as much color dye on her from students hugging her as she did from actually doing the run. So I'm very pleased that she's here tonight and that we're recommending her for tenure.
Thank you. And then you're also, 11.1.4, Mrs. Carrie Green.
So Carrie, too, we were very excited to bring on board. She's the most organized person you're ever going to meet in your life. She has pages written in color-coded Sharpie in a notebook that archive everything. When we're in the elementary council meetings, you can literally say, I wonder what so-and-so said on March 13th of 2014, and she can tell you what they said and what they were wearing. Not quite to that detail, but she's extremely organized and she's been such a gift to our team. She's always on top of what's going on. She's willing to share everything she does with her colleagues, all the hard work she does. It's not hers, it's ours. Her faculty and her staff appreciate that their leader can get on the floor to help a five-year-old feel like they mean everything in the world and then can turn around and be a concrete leader with information that backs up her thinking. And her faculty loves her to the point where, and I'm warning you, Carrie, they told me for April Fool's Day, they're going to steal all of her colored Sharpies and replace them with black ones. And anybody who knows Carrie knows that that will send her over the edge. I'm thrilled that we found Carrie and brought her into Lancaster. Sholly is a stronger building under her great supportive leadership and I'm happy that we're recommending her for tenure as well.
Thank you. The next two, 11.1.5, Mr. Jamie Pernick and 11.1.6, Mrs. Monica Dagler. Those two dedicated administrators are working at the high school right now, so they won't be here this evening. So could I have a motion to accept the tenure recommendations for 11.1.1 through 11.1.7, including the tenure recommendations for the teachers?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Thank you.
I just want to indicate, Mr. UTEC, being the president of the board a few times, an opportunity to see more perhaps than some of the other members behind the scenes, what goes on. And we are so blessed in this district to have these administrators, all of these people who have been given tenure tonight. Unfortunately, I don't get in the classrooms, that, you know, that wouldn't happen. So I really can't comment on the teachers, but I have faith in what the administrators say. But we do have direct contact with the administrators and it's an incredible job. You don't have a high graduation rate like we do. You don't have the children, or the students getting six or seven million dollars in scholarships. About things like, you know, a great job by them. So we've been very fortunate to have these people and I'm very glad that they're staying here. The other thing I want to say is I can't believe it's three years already.
I agree, Mr. Graeber.
So UTEC, are you going to mention the teachers?
The teachers will all receive their certificates. It was in the board packet.
No, I know, I know, I saw it. I didn't know if you were going to publicly announce names.
So what happens next time is, what we do is, we put it in, we, you take action on their tenure recommendation and then the next board meeting, we'll have similar, like, we'll say things about them each, each one and they'll be invited to the meeting.
Okay, with that, could I ask those four fine administrators to come up for their certificates, please? And then we can take your picture. 11.1.8, tonight we welcome Mr. Nathan Mason. And could I have a motion to accept the appointment of Mr. Mason as the Director of Facilities 2?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'm very impressed with his credentials, extremely impressed.
As am I. And if you look at Mr. Mason, I said before, he looks like a guy who can fix things and take care of things. So we look forward to working with you, Mr. Mason. If there's no other questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Congratulations. 11.1.9, could I have a motion to accept the Superintendent's Employment Contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I just have a question. I had a question to discuss this in the executive session perhaps later, asking a question for your ready language contract. I think you should have discussed this in the executive session. So I don't know, I can't vote on it right now, but discussion.
Mr. UTEC, this was fully discussed in executive session after the last meeting.
And I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I did read the minutes and gathered all the discussion that was had. What is the board's...
This is a call to you?
No, this is...
This is a session for you, if you have a...
No, it was not.
I see no reason, I see no reason to put this off.
You don't have to put it off. I just said I had a question, personnel issue, I think it should be discussed in executive session.
I move, we go ahead and vote, so. Anyone else have any comment? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, so moved. 11.1.10, Personnel Changes. Could I have a motion to accept the... Could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the committee on special education?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.2, could I have a motion to accept the committee on preschool special education?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.3, could I have a motion to accept the textbook approval, Living in the Environment, the AP edition?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Moving on to 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial items?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.2, policy adoption number 5630, facilities, inspection, operation, and maintenance. Could I have a motion to accept the adoption of the policy?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.3, policy adoption 7316, student use of personal electronic devices, or BYOD, wearing your own device. Any, or could I have a motion to accept the policy adoption?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Now, 12.4 through 12.8 are first readings of policy modifications that are BOSI's, BOSI-sponsored, I guess, so if we could just lump all of those together. Those are for information only and will be brought up for a vote at a future meeting. Does anyone have objection to lumping those together?
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
The, what about service animals? Can somebody name a horse?
Of course.
Did you read that?
I did read your post. I noticed that, other than dogs, other species-
Oh, yeah, the new ones, right?
Yeah, they're-
I've worked with students with service animals. I think it's awesome. I think it's great to have that as a formal policy, but where did the horse?
They're using many horses as service animals. I asked Mrs. Camerata if she wants to, um-
We can talk about it later. I just, I could have hit it. I could. But it's, you know, it talks about, you know, like a dog, and then in the last paragraph, they throw in this.
Because they're, and they're usually small miniature horses, but yes, that's an addition that comes from state education, the BOSI.
So I think if the teacher who was working with the state of the service, first would be interesting.
And it's also law to, uh, sell them.
Yes. Yeah. Do you need a goat? Goat, okay. I was just curious, I'm sorry, I never heard of goats. I read about them.
Okay, so 12.4, 12.5, 12.6, 12.7, and 12.8 have been covered. Those are for information. Moving on to 12.9, could I have a motion to accept the professional development plan for the upcoming school year?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, please. On the, um, I'm getting through, sorry. I went back to the horse. You have a, um, oh, in August, the administrative training was a Kenmore cooperative meeting. Is it possible for us as a board to change it? I've attended Kenmore trainings as a teacher, phenomenal. I'd love to ask you to do that, but I was just wondering, would that be something for the board? Do you think that would be a good thing?
Um, we've never added board members because it's, you know, it changes the dynamics and interaction, teachers, administrators, and stuff like that, but certainly if the board wanted to change its practice, they could. But really, it's an opportunity for people to learn and to, you know, experience, you know, what we're trying to incorporate here in the school district. So it changes the dynamics when board members are there, but certainly via your, you know, teaching position, we have and could incorporate you in the teaching professional development.
Well, the topic that you brought to the meeting, I thought was appropriate, so that's why I'm asking the rest of the board. As a teacher, I have a Kenmore training myself, so I, we both have that, we just thought we'd together participate, but-
That's not the definition-
I don't, I don't think that would be. This is professional development plan for the educators of Lancaster, so I wouldn't be agreeable to including ourselves on the board in this sort of training.
I think it's a professional, professional level, it's good for everyone.
This is a professional development plan for Lancaster educators. This is injecting ourselves into something. And when it was, when it was mentioned, I thought to myself, at Depew, if I was going through professional development and a board member came in, that would create an uncomfortable situation.
It says administrative training.
Well, administrators or teachers. When I say educators, that's the one-
Can we, can we just observe it? Can we just observe what's-
I would not be agreeable to that either. Any other comments?
I guess, I wouldn't be able to attend it because of work once again, but would we be able to do a spinoff maybe next year during one of our board meetings? Have a little presentation in regards to how it might be presented?
Yeah, things, things undertaken by this board should be entirely separate from the work our educators here at Lancaster do.
But wouldn't you agree with that, Mr. Utech?
I, I mean, I have no problem with doing some sort of seminar, but to inject ourselves in the teachers' and administrators' professional development plan is, is not advisable, in my opinion.
I think it would be educational just to know what they're, they're learning, since it's in all the classrooms.
But I think we could do that during a board meeting, have a presentation, a 15-minute presentation to us, recap in regards to what happened on that day, possibly?
I, I didn't, I didn't think it was that, because I have a request. I know my, my board is larger, our board members attend our staff tours all the time. I didn't realize it was a teacher thing because it says administrative training, so I thought, I didn't think it would be, but that's why, I'll give you that, but, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of improving the plan?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.10, could I have a motion to accept the contract between the district and the Kenmore Town of Tonawanda Union Free School District?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.11, could I have a motion to accept the food service department operating statements from April 2016?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'm just so proud of them. They're doing an awesome job, I'm sure. I'm so grateful.
The numbers are doing, I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.12, could I have a motion to accept the bond issue change orders?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.13, could I have a motion to accept the contract amendment with pharmacy benefit dimensions?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.14 is a bid award for athletic equipment, uniforms, and supplies. Could I have a motion to accept the bid award?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.15 is another bid award for waste removal and recycling. Could I have a motion to accept the bid award?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.16 is a bid award for abatement. Could I have a motion to accept the bid award?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.17 is a contract with the Glynn Group Engineering and Architecture and the District. Could I have a motion to accept the contract?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.18, could I have a motion to accept the contract between the district and Siena Environmental Technologies?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.19, could I have a motion to accept the assignment of the contract to Student Transport Incorporated?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.20, the 2016-17 transportation contract extension with Student Transport. Could I have a motion to accept the contract extension?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.21 is the 2016 summer transportation bid award. Could I have a motion to accept the bid award?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.22, 2016 summer transportation contract. Could I have a motion to accept the contract?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.23 is a tax subsidiary with Evans Bank. Could I have a motion to accept the proposal?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.24 is also a tax subsidiary with Tops Markets. Could I have a motion to accept the proposal?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.25 is another tax subsidiary with 4455 John C Street. Could I have a motion to accept the proposal?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.26, the ban sale results, the bond anticipation notes, which was quite interesting to learn about. And Miss, is Mrs. Phillips here?
Uh-huh.
How do we, how do we get such a low rate? How, can you explain that to me? It's under 1 percent, so that's just banks can make enough money in the short term? It's like a, it's like a temporary mortgage, correct?
Yeah, I mean, because of the dollar amounts that we're financing, so about 10, almost $20 million, and then $10 million for the new project. Actually, last year's was .33, so the interest rate was, like, that was like, they were really paying us to take the money from them, but that's why we're, with the larger ban, we're going to renew again for at least another year because those rates are so favorable, it doesn't make sense to permanently finance at this point.
Thank you. And that's for information only. That'll come up at a future meeting. 12.27, could I have a motion to accept the contract for service agreement with Omni Service?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.28 is the 2016-17 substitute rates for all those employees other than teachers, correct, Mr. Dr. Valley?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to accept those rates?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.29, could I have a motion to accept the payment of all bills?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 13.0, public hearing. Welcome to all who have come to observe this meeting this evening. This is a time set aside for public hearing, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person who registered per policy 1514 is given up to five minutes in which to address the board. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will be not engaging in dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. This policy will be strictly enforced, and anyone violating the policy will be precluded from addressing the board in the future. Thank you for your cooperation. One speaker this evening, Mr. Rick Foley. Would you come up to the microphone, sir?
Rick Foley, 40 Deer Pass. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Gallagher and Sue Metz for their victories in the pit and board election. I want to share my take on the elections. Elections are basically surveys, and last year, the majority of the voters were upset about the mascot being changed. This year, I believe the voters were upset about the possibility of the mascot being changed back. I think voters were sick of being in the front page all the time in the news, and I think the voters were sick of the controversies and some of the antics going on at board meetings, too. I also believe the election is an affirmation by the community that they want the high quality, you know, they recognize the high quality of the education in Lancaster School District, and they want to maintain the administrators, central administrators in particular, particular superintendent, to remain on board. And I'm very happy that nobody in the central office has taken the retirement incentive. So I'm glad Dr. Priney is staying, because Dr. Priney and Dr. Valley, Dr. Kufel, all played a role in advancing the high quality of education. Lancaster used to, and Business First first did their rankings 20 years ago, Lancaster was number 82, and this year, Lancaster was ranked number six. And if you, and, you know, Business First does not take into account the non-test scores such as the high-quality programs that we have and all the extracurricular activities that are offered to students. I mean, we have a fantastic music program and athletic program, and they've taken those items into account, we would definitely be number one, no doubt about it. So at the last, the budget hearing, I was very impressed to hear, and very happy to[1604.01] So at the last, the budget hearing, I was very impressed to hear, and very happy to hear about the fact that a large number of students will be taking AP Advanced Placement courses this coming year. 15 years ago, when I was a, an activist in my younger days, I was very critical of the board at that time for the lack of AP courses that were being offered. We had no science AP courses at all. We had a total of seven AP courses. Next year, we're going to have 17. And I want to thank all the administrators and teachers that played a role in, in that regard. So one other thing, videotaping of board meetings, I see that you're going to have them on the internet in the future. That's a very good thing, because it allows more people to view the board meetings that don't have Time Warner, and they can see the meetings at their convenience and, you know, play it back. So that's a very good thing that you've done here. And that's about it. So I want to thank the administration doing a fantastic job keeping Lancaster where it is, at the level it is, and I hope for, hope to see improvement in the future, and I know you do your best to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Moving on to, moving on to 14.0, future presentations. At this time, we have none scheduled, which brings us to 15.0, executive session. We'll be going into executive session to discuss the school resource officer report and to meet with the district's attorney. Could I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll go into executive session. This will probably be a lengthy one, so this will probably conclude the meeting for most of us. Thank you very much for coming this evening. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.